Tonight's meeting is a study session on the comprehensive plan, land use and transportation elements. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing an option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit those comments to three minutes. We will be using lights to signal the available time, and when the yellow light appears, commenters will have 20 seconds to conclude. When the red light appears, your time is up. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please remember this during your comments. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom are asked to submit an online form by 3:00 p.m. today. People wishing to submit written comments will also ask to submit those comments by 3:00 p.m. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. And I don't believe we got anything this meeting, did we? No microphone.
No.
Thank you. Sorry for that surprise. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City Website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. The call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone may follow along. At this point, take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones is absent and excused. Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Kurde?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
Commissioner Andrews is also absent and excused, and Commissioner Augustin?
Here.
All right. And in addition, we have attending Deputy Community Development Director Ashley Winchell, Deputy Public Works Director Steve Morikawa. Is he right there? Yes. Transportation Supervisor Raed Turini, Senior Planner Kirsten Mand, all in attendance. So, thank you all for being here. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. Before we begin, I'd like to remind commenters that while you may speak to whatever topic you choose, we ask if you are a council candidate, you not use this time to speak to your own campaign. Each person is solely responsible for their own comments, but speaking about your campaign could be a violation of campaign laws, which the Public Disclosure Commission would determine. Commissioner Andrews just tuned in. So Commissioner Andrews in attendance remotely.
Here, thank you.
At specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on our agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff noted in 3:00 p.m. were forwarded to all commissioners, and as indicated earlier, we did not receive any. So this time is for items not on tonight's agenda. Has anyone signed in? All right. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the microphone, and you'll have three minutes.
I have a question. Do I start?
Yes.
Ash, do I have like four Microsoft Word documents? My back's getting better.
Okay, good.
Okay, on the West Hill Bothell, there's a one-acre parcel right now, 1.06, at least that's what it says, slated for a seven-lot subdivision. There's like 40 to 60 trees up there. They're all gonna be gone. Now, as far as CO2, it takes 40 trees to offset 26,000 miles of commute, given the average commute, a gas vehicle. So, the average house burns up 1,200 kilowatt-hours of electrical energy a month. So they're tearing down this beautiful house, 1.2, I think they're tearing it down. It was sold back in March of 2022, and they're tearing down this thing, and they're putting up seven. And we know how that's gonna go, don't we? So, okay, so now we go from 1,200 kilowatt-hour consumption for one house to 8,400 kilowatt-hour consumption for seven. And then we're talking about the cars. That's another, at least four or 500. Now, one of the things I want to talk about before I get too long here, and I've told you guys this, I put up wind turbines in 2000. Mariah Energy Group, look it up, Google it, first operating electrical energy wind turbine company in the state of Washington. So I'm familiar with this stuff. EVs are bad. They're not good, they're bad. EV buses are even worse, particularly when you take into account the tire dust. That's the science. That's the science. So, what do I do here? Lived in Bothell for 32 years. All I did was buy a house on West Hill. That's it. All I wanted out of you people, don't tear down the trees, don't increase urban density. Please don't do that. But no, you decided to do it. You're bringing Federway to me, five times the violent crime rate. That's gonna happen here. Fortunately, I don't have to get too mad about it, because I know karma never loses an address. Now, I don't get to talk in a one-on-one kind of thing, but here's one thing you need to ask the Transportation Improvement Planning Committee. They should be able to come up, simple deal, Kevin knows this, come up with a simple tons of carbon aversion plan-
Thank you.
-that your plans are going to save, because it's not. You're putting it up in the air.
Thank you.
Ask him to come up with that. It's simple. An Excel spreadsheet, all you need.
Any other members of the audience wish to speak? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, that'll be, that'll conclude our public comment period. Our next agenda item is the approval of the June 7th minutes. We have before us the June 7th minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure, motion to approve the June 7th minutes.
All right, there's a motion to approve the June 7th minutes. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Kurde. They second the motion?
It's moved and seconded that we approve the June 7th minutes. Are there any comments to those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the June 7th minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous, the June 7th minutes are approved. That'll bring us to our next item, the principal item on tonight's agenda, the study session around the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Update, land use element and the transportation element. So are we gonna start with land use?
Yes, so we'll start with land use and then have some kind of transition comments, and then go into the presentation on the transportation element.
All right, that sounds good.
I will take it away. So I do want to introduce Andrew Bjorn from Burke. He is an associate principal there, and he's been helping us with the land use map and all of that work that we've been doing. So just as a reminder, the goal tonight is we really wanna go over the methodology and the workshop work that staff has done that's gone into the proposed draft that we have right now, and as well as the designations themselves. And as a reminder of our 2023 timeline, this is the one you see every time, we have moved into quarter three. So big amount of the work for us this summer is gonna be the engagement work that we do with the community. That will include affirming the guiding principles, and then also beginning of the drafting of the elements and some of the preliminary draft EIS work as well. But the big push is gonna be summer engagement through July and August, wrapping up in September. So an overview of what I'll be talking about with you, I really wanted to give a really high-level overview of what even is a land use designation versus a zone, what are sort of the intent of those two different things, what our existing land use map looks like and what we feel like it does and doesn't do, some best practices around land use that are generally accepted, as well as, like I mentioned, the staff workshops that we held. We've had two staff workshops that includes both Public Works and CD staff, including our development review team, and both of our consultants for the whole project, and then the draft map. And I'll hand it over to Andrew, and he'll get into all of the work that we did, how that was synthesized into the map, some of the things we still have some questions on and still kind of wanna do and get some feedback. So land use designations. The goal of land use designations in terms of comp planning is to look at a very high-level division of the land within a jurisdiction, and within these divisions, I'll establish a range of densities and intensities, as well as a range of the types of development that are envisioned for the area, the kind of things we wanna see for the area in the future. The other important thing they do is create a framework for implementing zones. So the zones are actually what's implementing the vision within those land use designations. That's the intent of what those are. So an example would be a low-density residential designation that would include zones that could potentially provide densities at a range from, let's say, one to eight units is kind of about what's accepted for what's considered low-density. And then zoning, like I mentioned, are the implementing component of the underlying land use designations, and these are the regulatory framework within which our planning staff and other development review staff review projects. Now, our existing land use map is gonna look really familiar because it looks almost exactly like our zoning map, because our land use designations map one-to-one are zones. And that is, the only additional thing that is really on here is some of the proposed public facilities, utilities, and open space areas. Those are kind of the only other changes. But other than that, if you look right, you know, side-by-side, our land use map and our zoning map are pretty much one in the same, which I think I've mentioned at some of our earlier meetings. So what is some of the considerations around our existing land use map? The way that our land use map is currently set up doesn't really serve that intended purpose of having those higher-level designations within which the zones are grouped. And because of this, any request for a rezone also requires a comprehensive plan amendment, which can be a little bit cumbersome. It makes it a little bit tricky to determine when a rezone makes sense, because the comp plan designations are kind of supposed to set up the rationale for why you would or would not approve a rezone. That also means that any rezone request, because it triggers a comp plan amendment, would also go to council, which, again, is added process and can be a little bit cumbersome, especially for staff. Another component of the way that our zones currently work is because it's, the way that our zones work, we don't have a colored map, so it can kind of be difficult to look at the map and get an idea of where is the residential, where is the mixed use, how are these patterns kind of working together? It's just not very illustrative of what the land use patterns are or what we may want them to be. And then it's very, it creates this added complexity, both for the reviewers, but also for the users of the map and for the community if they wanna get information. So some best practices for land use designations. Number one is just kind of simplicity. You want it to be really easily digestible, so limiting the number of designations to the extent that's possible. We also wanna make sure that we're covering everything that we want to, so we don't wanna be overly simplistic. But also that the descriptions of those designations, they really need to be clear. They shouldn't be, they should be concise and to the point. And the goal of that is to make it really clear what the relationship is between the implementing zones and the comp plan designations. Part of that is just to make sure that it makes sense. Part of that is also if we do get a rezone request, that the rationale for why we would or would not approve it is very clear in the language that we have. Another one, like I'm sort of alluded to before, is that relationship to zoning. We need to look at the land use designations with our targets in mind. Our growth targets are calculated based off of the zones, but obviously the zones need to correspond to the land use designation. So we do need to keep in mind those density and intensity ranges in regard to the zones. When we go to look at our zoning after we do our land use, then we can make sure everything is consistent, and it's getting to us where we need to go. And then, like I mentioned, the clarity on the basis for approving rezone requests as well. And then in terms of some other best practices, I'd like to think about existing and future facilities and development. So keeping in mind where are the schools within the community, jobs, transit, both facilities and the connectivity network or lack thereof. I won't go through all of these specifically, but these are all kind of the important factors that go into thinking about these land use designations. And I kind of put them into the buckets of proximity and patterning. So one being, so points of importance, the other being, when we're looking at designations themselves and where they're located, as well as what they're adjacent to, what are some of the important factors? A big one is transitions. What are some of the adjacent designations? How do those work together? Are there complementary uses or uses we wouldn't want next to each other, which is kind of the original intent of land use and zoning in the first place? And then connectivity, both existing, future connectivity, transit services, existing plans like our bike plan, talking with the transit agencies about where they have future routes planned, like we know that might be coming down Bothell of our highway, and then also working with adjacent communities. So, you know, we border a number of adjacent jurisdictions and making sure that those areas make sense as well. Another important factor is the natural environment. We know we have a lot of critical areas in the city, both wetlands and streams. We also have some pretty significant landslide hazard areas. That's the map I provided there. That's one of the reasons we have a big swath of that portion of the city zone for R40,000, for example, just because we know it's a hazard area. It's not, that makes it less of an appropriate area to wanna try and concentrate development. That also includes flood zones that are established by FEMA. And then there's also priority habitat and species zones that Department of Fish and Wildlife establishes. So these are some of the factors that go into us deciding, all right, where does it make sense to put more intensity? Where does it make sense to kind of let things lay a little bit more? And then color. Seems like a simple thing, but it does really make a big difference when, again, trying to really visually digest the way that the city is organized and the patterning within the city. So it creates that visual guide to looking at the city and following kind of similar practices that all jurisdictions use for what color is usually residential, what color is usually mixed use or commercial. So you can really get that visual sense of both the scale of the different uses in the city, but as well as the ratio of how much of one versus the other, and then again, what those patterns are. And then I just wanted to spend a brief amount of time, you have copies of the workshop kind of summaries, but I'll just spend a little bit of time talking about some of the outcomes of that. So our first meeting was really high-level. It was just kind of staff getting together and talking about what are some of the major values that we've sort of gleaned from both the community, from our electeds, from our boards and commissions, and staff, especially staff that's been here a really long time, and what are some of those values that would be important in informing how we assign land use designations and create them. So there were sort of five main buckets that we took away, the sort of central one to everything being equity. Other four important ones, resilience. So that's making sure that we're in always thinking about resiliency as the city. Pluralism, which is kind of, we were on the fence about using this term because it's a little wonky, but that meaning working together with adjacent jurisdictions, working together with the region to make sure that we're not just thinking of ourselves in a bubble, but making sure what we're doing is gonna be integrated out through everyone that we work with. Balance, so making sure that, just like the word just means, we're thinking about the balance of uses, intensities, types of uses, where things are. And then functionality, just sort of a really baseline, making sure it's easy to use and workable. Sometimes making things complicated doesn't make things better, and, you know, we wanna make sure that that staff can use it, that it makes sense to the public, that it makes sense to everyone that would be a user. And then the big move, so we identified some of these in our first workshop, but kind of got kind of more drilled down into it in the second workshop. And what we mean by this is sort of what are the main factors that we're thinking about either needing to do or wanting to do with the land use map, both the designations, where they are, and what they look like. So I believe there were six that we really talked about. One being this kind of simple fact that we have to transition away from single-family in our land use patterning. We have HB 1110 coming down the pike. I know everyone's very aware, we're working on our own middle housing ordinance, as well as the new housing targets from SB 1220. So part of that is the affordability requirements. And the guidance we've gotten from Department of Commerce is that the way that we show compliance with providing housing at those levels has to do with housing type. So we really need to think about how do we imagine our land use designations and our zones in such a way that we can make sure that we're consistent with that and we're providing the housing types necessary to support these levels of affordability coming down. The second one being sustainability in both our infrastructure and land use, so keeping in mind the needs of the future in terms of development, as well as trying to minimize costs and impacts moving forward. And then, as I've mentioned a few times, streamlining, so making the land use map much more simple, simple, and keeping with the intent of why we have land use designations in comprehensive planning. And then also simplifying process when it comes to rezoning, which isn't always an exciting topic, but it is very important for both the city and for the community that we work with and for customers. One thing we've talked a lot about, I know that council's passionate about, and we've talked a lot about is neighborhood centers and just neighborhood planning in general. We already have some identified, I think they're called neighborhood activity centers in the comprehensive plan, and then we obviously have our regional growth center up in Canyon Park, and then we have two candidate countywide growth centers, that's what that second acronym is there, and that's downtown, and then the Snohomish County portion of what is currently referred to as Canyon, not Canyon Park, Country Village. And so we've been talking a lot about wanting to build off of the existing policies we have related to neighborhood centers and centers in general, and where can we leverage the existing designations we have to improve that kind of sub-area level planning? And that will probably be some form of implementation component of where and when do we wanna look at the sub-areas in the future after we're done with comp plan? Another important one we talked about is equity and quality of life, so looking at the amenities we provide, where are they, what is the full range of different community needs? So a big component of our engagement this summer will be helping figure out, you know, what are the, what are the big-ticket items that the community wants to see, and how do we look at integrating that into the city when it comes to the land use designations? And then lastly, but not leastly, environmental quality, so again, addressing what are really key critical areas and also natural resources beyond just critical areas, things like sustainable building practices, how do we kind of build that into what we're doing with the land use designations, and then also the implementing zones and development regulations? So with all of that said, I'm gonna hand things over to Andrew, and he's gonna take us through the draft land use map, how some of the prior discussion in terms of best practices and our workshops informed what he's done so far, and then some of the areas we still have discussion points on and questions about.
Great. Give you the- Thanks, Kirsten. So this is the draft land use map in color. This was designed as a larger format map, so there are some elements that on the screen may be a little bit difficult to pick out, but we do, even simply seeing the elements here, I think, can show some of the major features that we're looking at here and some of the major considerations that we have in going forward with the land use map. So as Kirsten was saying, there were some elements that we were looking at as we were refining this concept. The first really is just making it simpler and easier for staff, for policymakers, for public, other stakeholders to just interpret and digest. It's a whole lot easier to look at this, and we've tried to make it as color-blind safe as possible, but trying to present this as a much more direct map and something that's a little bit more straightforward. There are other elements, though, that we have included that I'll go into with a little bit more detail, but generally, the intent of this is simplicity and making it reflective of what's currently on the ground. So as I noted, you know, the areas are now color-coded, it's no longer black and white. One of the other things that we looked to do was to also aggregate the areas on the basis of a broad land use category. So there are a much more limited number of large categories, looking at downtown, commercial employment, mixed use, essentially public uses and residential. There's some differentiation within those categories, but it's a broad set of categories that are used so that you can generally distinguish what the intent is of these individual areas. Another thing that we did was to take out a lot of the overlays that were included in the more complex map, and some of them were removed or consolidated for certain, for simplicity as well. For example, having a distinct layer within a land use content map in a comprehensive plan for motor vehicle sales is very prescriptive, and we wanted to try to pull that out so that this would stay at a little bit higher of a level for this. We also took a look at aggregating the residential areas on the basis of just simple policy direction, and we also looked to have this guided by the requirements under HB 1110. So at a high level, the single-use residential areas are now aggregated a little bit more towards compliance with HB 1110. You have areas where they're heavily encumbered or potentially encumbered by critical areas where it would be very difficult to develop them out at higher densities, and they would be exempt from some of the conditions under 1110. There are areas that would just be broadly impacted by 1110 and would require higher densities, and then there are higher-density areas than that that would likely either be currently, that would currently allow higher density, or, and this will get into some of the adjustments that we're looking to make on this map, but it would also be areas that could support higher densities as a result of being close to high-capacity transit. Another change that we had in here, and this is also related to the overlays, is that we just pulled out and put in specifically as an area, mobile home parks. And that's specifically because having them clearly defined for the sake of policy can make it more clear that this is a policy focus of the city. We did include public uses that- We did include public uses, that wasn't really included in the, in the current map. You have schools, you have other public facilities that are included in here that are either kind of classified differently, or you have, you know, two different park designations under the, under the current land use map. We just worked to consolidate this and provide something that was clearly defined. Kind of with respect to specific employment areas, the, there are specific areas designated as employment in the Canyon Park area. We latched on to this to include this as well in certain other areas in the city. There are some areas, though, that are clearly mixed use and not necessarily single-use commercial. That's kind of the broad purple areas that we've included in here. So we wanted to have a bit of a distinction between areas that are currently exclusively for employment, primarily industrial, but also flex use and some commercial, differentiating that from some of the more commercial and, you know, apartment uses. And then finally, and this is, this is a little bit of a very particular element here. We wanted to be very clear about agriculture. There's one, like the Magnolia Dairy is the only agricultural area that's designated on the current map, and that's fine, but commercially kind of viable agriculture, it's not an ongoing concern in Bothell right now. It's much easier to make the statement that it's part of the open space system because of its status as a TDR sending site for the regional TDR system, but provide a special overlay that distinguishes it and ensures that it can be maintained in agricultural use as opposed to, you know, other parks in the, in the city. So that's kind of a really quick overview of some of the changes that we're recommending. We want to be very careful with this map because, for one, we're using this as an input into some of the calculations about expected development densities, as an input into transportation planning, but also as a discussion about fulfillment of requirements under 1220 and the updated requirements under the Growth Management Act. However, the other thing to note here is that this is a change, and we want to have this reflect what's currently on the ground, what the current policy focus is of the city. So we want to be very careful that we're essentially coloring in the right colors into the right spaces according to what people in the city want. So that being said, this is still a work in progress. This provides a good understanding about where we're at right now, but there are certain areas where we do want to make a few additional changes. So one is looking at the residential areas, and like I had suggested before, we currently have three levels that are there. We essentially, for the single-use residential areas, there may need to be some refinement on the basis of the provisions of middle housing policy, as well as other considerations about what can be supported in different areas. As well, this is not necessarily land use, but we do want to include high-capacity transit and major transit lines in this map as reference, because it can be useful to understand that, and it does have certain land use implications under HB 1110. We do have a, and again, it's, we need to kind of create a, a version that is friendly to printing it out on eight and a half by 11 paper, but there are environmental overlays that are currently designated based on what's currently in the map, but what we want to do is to expand it out to include critical areas, not as a means of limiting development per se from this map, but more as a reference to understand where critical areas in shoreline management may come into play. Like I had mentioned before with, with residential areas, but this also applies to other areas included in this map as well. There may need to be an expansion of some of the areas that we're looking at, either, you know, an expansion of where higher density would be allowed, or changes in what some of the, some of the individual colors may be, reflecting what's currently on the ground and what the intent is for the future of land use in those areas. And then finally, we do have this map incorporating not just the current city boundaries, but also the UGAs, and that's by intent to give an idea about what the city policy would be as certain areas are annexed in the future. However, this does need to reflect what Snohomish County policy also is, because that's what is going to be applied in the interim before annexation occurs. So we do want to be aware of that and incorporate any changes that Snohomish County is pursuing in those areas as well. So I think that that is it for that section, so.
Yeah, and I have one last slide of discussion point, is kind of just as a way to align what we're talking about with our land use discussion and the transportation discussion. So some of the, I just pulled a few sort of key points of nexus between land use and transportation when we're thinking about designation. One big one, especially as we're discussing these things with the actual agencies themselves, is their policies for where they put certain service types. So one thing I included here, this is, I think is from King County Metro, is how they align service types with areas. So one big point of importance is transit supportive densities, both with population and jobs. They also look at the types of mix of uses that are there in terms of thinking about frequency and type of service, existing connections or potential future connections, and then supportive policies and programs. So in terms of connections, that also includes pedestrian facilities, bicycle routes, and then key land uses, so things like schools, employment hubs, access to areas where there just tends to be a lot of folks that use transit, people that need transit, senior living facilities tend to be an important place where people need transit. So just as an important connection between why we're even having a meeting tonight, both discussing, discussing land use and transportation. So with that, I think we want to turn it over for discussion.
All right.
Back to the map, yeah.
So commissioners, questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Westerbeck.
Commissioner Westerbeck, first of all, I excitedly read through this packet, I love this, this is one of the reasons I got onto planning, or wanted to get on Planning Commission, is sort of simplification and streamlining of land use code, because I use land use code in my work. And so I love the, the removal of the overlays, those can be your best friend, your worst enemy, and this sort of complicate things, they always feel like they're sort of a Band-Aid, they look like it and they, they're going to work like it. When I would do a feasibility study or something for a project, first thing I do is I go look at the code, and most cities do have the color-coded, so I was excited about that. And I'm trying to understand, are we also going to keep the zoning code and then overlay the land use code? Or are we going to get rid of it? Because I see we're adding little pieces of it in the comp plan change, maybe it looks like, that I saw here.
Yeah, so I can clarify, so the discussion tonight is on the land use designations for the comprehensive plan. And so once we've established those higher-level designations, again, with those ranges of densities, then we can go, then we'll need to go into the zoning code and do that update to reflect consistency. For example, for this one, I believe for the residential low, that includes R9600, R8400, and R7200. So that's sort of the grouping that goes into the low category, for example. Now, that's why when we're talking about the future land use designations, we need to also be keeping in mind what the zones would be associated with those, to make sure we're getting to those targets.
Because most of the simplification and the streamlining is wonderful, I love it, and I like what I see here, but if we suddenly have a land use designation and then also zoning, and they're different, so I go into like, say I'm looking at Project Never, and they've got the color coding, you know this, and you go, okay, it's, you know, LR1 or something like that, in Seattle, of course, but great, and I go look for densities, dimensions, height, setbacks, all that stuff. But then if I'm now going to be like, oh, wait a minute, that's in the, the so-and-so land use designation, the color tells me that, but I have to go to this totally different section of the code to find out, you know, what setbacks, that's just like two things instead of one. Are we going to avoid that somehow?
Right, so that's why, one of the goals of this presentation was to, to have this discussion about what is a land use versus a zone.
Yep.
So when you're going in to do a project, you do need to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, but really for the purposes of current development and development review, it's the zoning code that is going to be really driving those, and then ensuring that, that code, what our work is, is to ensure that that code is reflective of the established land use.
Right.
So you, we would really only be going into the comprehensive plan and looking at the land use designations, for the most part, just to ensure that the policies are still consistent and/or if you're requesting a rezone, and making that request of, well, we want to get, change zones, and we're consistent with the associated land use, and this is why.
But we will have two things now to look at instead of one, though zoning obviously rules, like what you can do with that. But, so we're, in some ways, we're making it a little more complicated, but it's in the service of this larger comp plan-specific adherence to readjusting how we see Bothell for the next 10 or 15 years, and updated designations, because I just tried to tease that out a little bit, because it's going to make, make it a little more complicated, but, so we'll look at a zone, and you might have, you know, a residential zone that crosses three, three areas, but you go, oh, yeah, cool, I'm, you know, orange or yellow or something like that, then you've got to go in and zoom in. So as long as we make it understandable in the code, I just, because you do, there's often expectation you're going to find your color, then you find your section, and so someone who works, works with this, you know, for a living, it's really frustrating to find out you've got two different pieces of the land use code and zoning code that are governing your project, then you've got to figure out how they, how they apply, so.
I can add, sorry, from the sidelines over here, but I think to that point, sometimes when you have two different, say you have one property with two different zones, if they have the same land use designation, there's also some opportunity for streamlining, rezoning, and making that more of an administrative process than something that goes through Planning Commission and City Council, and so there are some advantages of how it can make the process simpler in the long run for the applicant when we do get into some of those cross-zoned areas, or the land use code, because it is, or it's not even a land use code, the land use map may be more basic and may have more implementing zones, and so it may actually facilitate projects in an easier way than going through the full comprehensive plan amendment and rezone request, and so that's one of the other advantages that we're looking at of this, and some things that some surrounding cities have done that, that get people through the process quicker while honoring the community's goals and desires for that land use designation.
Appreciate that, and I did hear that in the presentation, that it was going to help rezones and streamlining, so that was not lost on me, I appreciate that, and the effort that'll be made to, to make it clear.
One other, one other quick note, sorry, is typically with respect to how zoning works, is that it, it's almost a hierarchical progression where you're not going to have, you're not typically going to have one zone in several different areas. So it is, there is kind of this categorical way that it can work. One issue that can come up is that this is a future land use map, there are times when you can get old zoning in certain areas, but the intent of this is to make it more simple for communication.
No, I, I think it'll work, I just, it sounds like you're doing the work to make it, when it's finally codified and put down on paper, understandable, if this, then this, like the 2009, 2010, whatever, when we published it, the subarea zone for downtown, it's pretty clear, it has this sort of, you know, this flow, check this first and this, and you sort of know that intuitively as someone that does that work, but it's really nice that the city said, you know, this is the order you should go in to make sure you're adhering to all the, the policies. And so as long as we end up with something like that, that'll make it really understandable to, to figure out what someone can do with their property. And I know you know that, but just reiterating.
Commissioner Anders?
Thank you. There were just a couple of references that I needed some clarification on, and one was the use of intensities. I get density, but I don't think I understand what, what we're meaning by intensity.
Typically, intensive, there are a few different ways that it can be used, but typically, and I think that this is the reference that you're talking about, it's just talking about residential density and then, like, the intensity of development for employment uses, because typically its density is talking about people per square, you know, people per acre or housing units per acre, so it's just a, it's, it's trying to incorporate all land uses in together.
Okay, so not just the number, but the, the different types of uses?
Yeah, because typically, commercial land uses are calculated with, with different types of metrics, so instead of housing units, it's square footage of floor space, instead of people, like residents, it would be employees, so it, it's a little bit of a different, it can be apples, apples to oranges with some of the calculations, so we just want to be a little bit more broad when we're talking about it.
Okay, and my second question was, what's the distinction between mixed-use community and mixed-use neighborhood?
That would primarily be with respect to the underlying districts that this were, that this was based on, but generally, it would be the current, and I'm using this term again, the current intensity allowed in those zones where essentially, the, the more intense the color, the more development is allowed in those areas right now. Now, this can change, and we're not necessarily fixed on maintaining three different categories in this area if it doesn't make sense. However, this currently reflects the aggregation of the current zones in that area.
Okay, so if I had a, a project, how would I know if I fall within the community designation or the neighborhood? I, I still don't quite get it.
I, I don't have the crosswalk between the current designations and, but it's essentially just derived from what's currently there in the current land use map. So we're not, we're not envisioning that there would be any immediate changes from this map, although there may be changes later.
Yeah, and usually, on the land use map page or somewhere in the preamble to the land use element where the map is, you'd see a chart that shows for these designations, these are the applicable zones that fall within that designation.
Thank you, that was, that was going to be my last question. Thank you.
Commissioner Kurd?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for this map, it is great. It really paints a, okay, it paints a picture. It's also, the colors distinctly show patterns of open space and green space in our, in our city, so I'm encouraged about taking the value discussions that staff had come up with and looking at equity as a result of this, this map, this is a great tool. A couple of things, first, I would encourage more pluralism in the map, so there's a little tiny blue dot at the very northeastern corner outside of the city boundaries, and that's awesome. I think that there are other places around the edges of the city that also have an impact on, you know, people who live on, in the far stretches of Bothell, they may not be culturally connected to downtown as much, and so their neighborhood centers and their places of activity may be different, and so I like that little blue dot, and I want to encourage more of it. The other thing is that I noticed there are some public institutions that aren't shown in blue, so especially some of the schools, Maywood Hills Elementary, North Shore Middle, and Woodmore are not. So especially some of the schools, Maywood Hills Elementary, North Shore Middle and Woodmore are not shown. So that, it's a work in progress, but just wanted to make sure we're capturing those as blue places because they could be used in natural disasters or so forth. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and this is probably a longer discussion than we want to have, but conservation level zoning, that is an interesting choice. That was made in a different era of environmentalism. The steep slopes surrounding that neighborhood are not going to stand up in an earthquake. So currently, as it stands, we are conserving a high-risk, critical area. And the only way that we can reduce the risk of those areas and add protection to infrastructure or houses that may be affected would be development. And that's just the way that it is right now. There's no other mechanism for reducing risk for critical areas, especially landslide hazards. So for example, in the city of Seattle, every time you touch a critical area, you have to bring it up to a certain level of earthquake, right? And we do, same thing in Bothell, but by enforcing a very low intensity in those areas, we're basically ensuring that that's never going to, the existing pretty high level of risk is never going to be reduced. And it's never going to be touched. Because as soon as someone touches that, they're affecting that level of risk and they're probably increasing it. So I would challenge the idea that low density, if we're working under the current paradigm of development is the only way to reduce risk, I would challenge the idea that lowering the density is the safest option to preserve and protect critical areas. The other thing, transition areas. We've been deeply involved with transition zones on this commission recently. And we are noticing that there's not actually that much of a difference between the transitions and the surrounding neighborhoods. So I'm interested in why those areas are specifically called out in very bright distinctive colors if there's not functionally too much of a difference. Or is that more of a identifier for future discussions about the intensity in those areas? Yeah, transitions. Love to know more.
Where should I start? I guess back to front. The, with respect to transitions, there certainly is the possibility to include residential transition areas in here. But in terms of the colors that you're talking about, which do you mean in particular?
So in the downtown land use areas, there's the downtown gateway, which is a distinctive, a distinctive zone. But we also have the downtown transition and basically Sunrise Valley View that while they do have their own code, for the purposes of land use, they very much match, if not our exact copies of the residential low. And so why pull those out? What was the guiding?
I think, I think that's a good point. I think that it's certainly possible that that could be aggregated elsewhere. With respect to the downtown area in particular, we were very sensitive about not changing that much, given that, for one, we would be looking at the area for kind of a review of the sub-area plan. So we, in terms of making broad stroke changes, we were more thinking that that may come later. With respect to transition zones from the downtown, again, I think that it's certainly possible that you can have greater identified densities on this map as you move further out. I think that one of the major constraints that we'd be looking at, in addition to critical areas, would just be servicing in those areas. And if it's close to downtown, it's more likely to be serviced than other areas in the city. So again, it's certainly a work in progress. It's something that we want to reach out to staff about. We want to continue the dialogue with you about. But yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
I'll just respond really quickly to that because I did kind of vomit a lot. There, I like that idea and I also think that there is capacity for change in those areas. So I'm not saying, just make them yellow. I'm saying if we're making these magenta areas and lots of different colors around here, I mean, we spent a lot of time in Canyon Park too, and not necessarily seeing the same level of like distinctions between intensities in Canyon Park that we had in our code or in that whole process. So I'm just, I'm wondering the differences and I know it's a work in progress and I know that there's more time that's been on it. No worries, but thank you. Thanks for that.
Yes, Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. Yes, thank you again for this really helpful packet and all the work you've done here. I really enjoyed looking through it as the other commissioners have mentioned. I just, I just have a few things I wanted to ask. The first is, is this map as it currently is or as we would like to see it?
This is largely how it currently is.
Okay.
So this is intended to be adjusted over time through consultation with you, with the public, with council.
Okay, okay. And so you guys have talked about getting input and things like that. Have, who are you guys consulting with or planning on consulting with as you made this map and continue in its development? You know, kind of get maybe some of the micro elements that, you know, it's easy to overlook if you're not part of that community.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So part of this is meeting and talking with you all. We'll be presenting to the City Council at the end of the month. We've also been working really closely with our transportation team, their consultants. And then we've also been talking to transit agencies. That's another important component of this. And then as well as the community through our outreach events of the summer. We also have a working group. We'll be meeting again in July and that's a part of our community engagement strategy. And then I'm sure we'll be creating some engagement strategies through the website as well for folks to see it and comment and provide direction. I know we've also been working with the school district, so some of those other important, other agencies in the city. We always, as well, because we do our capital facilities plan update, we talk to the different utility agencies. There's a lot of different important stakeholders in the discussion, yeah.
If I can just continue along that line of thought, I really appreciate you guys need to consult all these different major players in, you know, running a city. What I worry about is that we're overlooking some populations when we talk about, you know, what goes on in what area, that, of populations that don't have the access to large, for example, the internet, or can't come to big public gatherings, or don't know, or have a language barrier, or are homeless. And I mean, I think that, and I know that we have, this goes across all levels of government, to really seek out those populations. When we're trying to map it out, too often those populations are overlooked. When, if we're focusing on equity, that needs to be the absolute forefront. And I mean, and for me, that would mean literally going to the mobile home parks and asking them. It would be putting up signs in, it would certainly putting up signs in, you know, apartment places where, you know, immigrants or students tend to have higher population in several different languages. Going to churches, community centers of populations that are not often representative. And then talking with the disabled community, which is just so often overlooked when we make these kinds of decisions, when they really should be at the forefront of these kinds of mapping plans. So I want to get that out there, get that right, right from the start. And so, thank you. Yeah, if we can bring that to the forefront, I think it meets our, like you said, the equity element that we're so focused on. So, thank you.
Other commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Anders, another question or still?
Oh, no question. I, my hand is not up, I don't think. Let's see.
Yep, there you go.
Oh, there we go.
Nope. We'll carry on. Thank you.
Sorry.
So I've got a question. I see the big environmental area, kind of between 35th and Fitzgerald. What is that? I know North Creek goes through there, but it seems to go pretty far away from North Creek and in fact into areas that are designated as medium-density residential.
So, and correct me if this is wrong. I believe that that is reflective of the North Creek Protection Area overlay that's in place within the Fitzgerald sub-area. There's some additional requirements for environmental review for new projects in that overlay. There's also a low-impact development other overlay in the Fitzgerald. And that's just reflective of, we have some critical water resources there. There's also, I think, an animal crossing identified to the northern portion of that sub-area. Believe that is why that is there.
Okay. I also know that north of 228, in the kind of dark purple area, that's pretty much wetland right off of 228, but that's not included in the environmental area.
One of the, so we presented an earlier version of this map to staff and one of the comments was that the environmental overlay could be expanded to include other types of areas that would have certain environmental concerns or constraints with planning implications. So that would be another example of that. We don't want to make it too busy because I, you know, I've done land use maps before that try to map out wetlands on them and it's a, it can be a really big mess. But we do want, for example, to expand that out to include other areas that would also have those implications as well.
All right, thank you. And another comment, I am not the best person on colors. So you can discount this if you wish. But I look at Mobile Home Park and I look at Sunrise Valley View, and boy, they look pretty comparable, particularly with the two that are close together.
Yeah, yep. So it, trying to determine how best to coordinate the colors with this is a challenge. One thing that can help is by removing the underlay here. There's currently, for the purposes of the consultation that we were doing with staff, we thought that having an aerial kind of image underneath it would be useful in distinguishing where certain things are. Because it's, it's a whole lot easier to pick out where schools are if you can see what's underneath the individual zones. The final version is not going to have that because having that in the comp plan just wouldn't, wouldn't really work well. So the intent would be to make it much more distinctive in the final version.
Okay, but you would maintain the streets, correct?
Oh, yes, yes. We, we always want to have some reference on there so that whenever you're doing, well, inevitably, whenever you're doing consultation, everybody that looks at this map is going to try to figure out where their house is.
Oh, yeah.
Every time. It's the first thing that people look for. So ensuring that there's enough wayfinding on the map with streets and with other types of boundaries is essential, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments, questions? All right, thank you for this. Very informative. Oh, one more. Commissioner Westerback?
Not to be pedantic, it's kind of back to my original topic, but it seems like there's going to be, of course, there's land use designations and you've got some of these things like residential medium, low, et cetera. And then we're also introducing, you're introducing some, we already have downtown core, DN, downtown neighborhood, transition, Sunrise Valley View, but those, right now down the sub-area code, those relate to zoning because of course we have one-to-one right now. So again, I just kind of, I don't know that I have a solution, but it's going to be a little confusing if you have, oh, you've got land use designations and they generally are a little different than the, you know. RM is a lot different than saying R9600, right? Easy. But then you're going to have situations where it's DN, but it's also DN. So I just, I think that's fine, but it could create a little bit of confusion.
I would note that that is currently how it is.
Yeah, yeah, but because it's one-to-one, you don't have to think about it.
Right, yeah.
You just know that. It's like, right now, it's actually easy in that way. Because what you see is what you get. So introducing it, we just need to make enough distinction that we understand this is land use, this is. So I'm not sure you have to rename everything, but just be aware.
Yeah, it's a good point. I think that in our first cut at this, we worked to aggregate what we could. And there were a lot of things that could,
It's complex.
Yeah, and there were a lot of things that could just be purple.
Yeah.
When it comes to looking at different areas of the downtown, there was a different intent behind each of the individual current areas. So that was the reason why we kept it the way that it is. But it can be aggregated. It's, as mentioned, it's an ongoing process. We may want to kind of ask about whether it makes sense to aggregate some of the areas in there.
I could certainly see aggregating like DT, DN, DT, something like that, and Gateway and what's it? Yeah, Sunrise Valley View. And I know that's a little bit different, but maybe you just have a core and then you have everything else outside that. But then within that, you've got your designations that we have today. Not to throw a monkey wrench in, but.
Oh, that's easy. That's not a monkey wrench.
Makes it easier, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think part of the reason that it was a little bit easier to integrate the Canyon Park zones into land use designations is because they already kind of read like that pretty easily.
It would develop completely differently. Downtown's incremental for the last 130, 40 years with houses and apartments and everything. It's a totally different development pattern. So yeah, it lays out so much differently. I can see why the colors are different there. I'm always thinking about how I'm going to use it, that's all.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Yes, I was curious about Senior Planner Mann's comment about reading the Canyon Park zones. And I would love to hear more about digging into the idea of reading the zones and how that applies here.
Reading the zones. I'm trying to remember what I said.
Yeah.
I can speak to it a little bit. I think that the, so there was a change with the Canyon Park sub-area plan and how land use designations worked. So originally it had like motor, what is it, the motor vehicle sales overlay? And different types of designations comparable to what you see in other places. It was simplified for the sub-area plan and it had environment, environmental, employment medium, employment low, and then a number of different mixed-use areas on the basis of whether it was just office and residential or whether it was more broadly mixed use with more residential focus. But that lent itself a whole lot more to be aggregated because you could just collapse a lot of those categories together pretty easily. Now, one thing to note in the map is that the area up on the hill in the Canyon Park, in the Canyon Park area, is a pretty distinctive light blue because that is not something that is really what we find in a lot of other places. There are certain development restrictions that are there. There are CCNRs. There are other considerations involved where, you know, just lumping it into the other employment category didn't necessarily make as much sense. It could if we're looking at a very high level, but we wanted to kind of distinguish that. That was probably a much longer answer than what you were looking for.
Thanks. This is very helpful because we've all been through the Canyon Park process and it's really helpful to hear the comparisons between that and the downtown. So it's kind of refresh our memory and help us figure out why they might be a little different.
Yes, Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. Just one really quick question. What's this Ohio-shaped thing in Snohomish County that's kind of purple? It's shaped exactly like Ohio. I'm just wondering. It's in blue. Don't you know your geography? No, I'm, it's, yeah, it's got, it's almost heart-shaped. It's blue and it's like a purple part in the blue?
I, is there a way that we could? I, is there a way that we could?
Yeah, I was, so right above the Snohomish King County line in the blue section, there's like a little tiny purple, almost like a heart. It's east of, what's that?
High Cobb. That's.
What?
That's a, or that's the North Shore School District Office.
Oh, yes. Oh, now I see it. Oh, in Canyon Park, you mean?
Is that, is that Canyon Park right there? Yeah. Across from the, the green. That's okay. No, it's not Canyon Park. It's North Creek.
Oh, where is?
It's on North Creek.
I'll come over and show it here.
Is that the Islamic Community Center?
I think it might be.
What is that?
I believe it is the Islamic Community Center.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, it's North Shore School District.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, that's all.
Yes. I mean, there, there are some elements in the map that are a little bit different. I mean, there are a number of playfields, for example, kind of in the, oh geez, I can't point.
Oh, yeah.
I need my.
We need to bring one of those. This has happened to us more than once. Yeah, I have one at home. I'll get one.
I should have just pulled out my laser pointer.
Oh, there you go. You come prepared.
Well, I don't usually get the chance to use this, given that we're always presenting on Zoom now, so.
So that we need to provide you an opportunity.
Yeah, I know.
Great, all right. That's great. So, yeah, so I, I mean, for example, you notice that there are a number of different kind of playfields that are included in here.
That's what those are.
But, you know, one of the elements of the land use concept that we want to bring forward is that we, we want to represent the green network in the city. And, well, the blue-green network, I should say, given that the river should also be incorporated as part of that. But, but yeah, there are always going to be little, you know, random US states that stick out.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion around this portion of the agenda? Seeing none. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. As you can tell, we were engaged and enjoyed discussing it with you, so look forward to hearing next steps.
Thank you. And then I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen so that Steve Markawa and Ryan Terry can come up here for their component.
Do we want to take a brief break while they set up or? Okay, let's just take 10 minutes and you guys can set up and change seats and we'll be back at, I have 7:13, so 7:23. Welcome back, everyone. We reconvene the July 5 meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission and we will now move on to the comprehensive plan update transportation element.
So, good evening, everyone. I have Carmen Kwan from Ferren Peers. She's going to do the bulk of the presentation tonight. Transportation, you heard a little bit about Kirsten talking about transportation and land use, how it's intertwined. Tonight, I think you're going to have a little harder time seeing that, but what I tried to do in your packet and your memo was describe some of the things we do. I mean, there are opportunities where we're going to work closely with land use. We can advocate for transit. We have been advocating for a long time and we know in the future we're going to get bus rapid transit in certain locations, so we will continue to do that. Coming up, we have an opportunity to sit down with the transit agencies and we will talk to them about land use and what their plans are so we can make sure we're best aligned. So those, that's an example of where we have an opportunity to align it very well. Middle housing is a little different. We have been, the legislature basically told us how this is going to happen and it's kind of more of a guess or estimate of how much we're going to see in what locations. And it might be generally throughout neighborhoods as an example. So that's something that transportation will have to more like react to, less than try to work with it so much. Tonight, regardless of which way it goes, whether we can influence it or not, transportation, we're moving toward multimodal level of service because citywide, we think that's the best route. And Carmen's going to tell us a little bit more and dive a little bit deeper into multimodal level of service. And then the second topic that she's going to cover is project priorities, which we'll do in the fall. And again, regardless of whether we can interact it or can't interact it, we still have to come up with projects as well. So both of these topics will occur regardless of how well we can coordinate everything. Excuse me. So I'm going to pass it off to Carmen.
So Steve had already mentioned, we're here to provide an update on how staff are feeling about multimodal level service and some of the policies that they're leaning towards. And the second item we will be discussing, one of the key outcomes of a transportation element update is the 20-year project list to support growth in the city over the next 20 years. So in here, I really wanted just to give Planning Commission idea of the approach that we're taking to make sure you understand when we come back in the fall with a project list, how we actually got to that step. So as we previously mentioned, level of service is a promise of how the transportation system will perform. And under our current policies, the city's mainly measures auto delay along key concurrency corridors. By switching it up to multimodal level of service and having policies for walking, biking, and riding transit as well, we're able to identify other improvement projects to support growth over the next 20 years. So not just focus on improving auto delay within the city. There were a couple internal workshops that staff had and they discussed various options that neighboring jurisdictions currently have adopted, how, what kind of data is needed? How do they manage that over time? And right, we're here today to give you an update on where staff are leaning towards. So specifically, we did provide more information in the Planning Commission memo, but what we have right now is for the auto mode, we're looking at maintaining the city's current standards of looking and evaluating at corridor level of service. This provides the city a lot of flexibility in identifying where vehicle improvements would be needed across the city. For pedestrian, the city is leaning towards a pedestrian gap and connectivity analysis. So this is part of city staff's current ongoing task to evaluate where there are gaps in facilities for people walking across the city. And there will also be a review of how new connections might improve, improve access between destinations as well. For the bicycle mode, the city very recently adopted the citywide bike plan. And so the policy would be looking at building a low-stress bicycle network. Sorry, I realize there's a typo on that slide, but that really speaks to the city's commitment to building out the bicycle network in the city's plan. And then for transit, this one's a little bit more tough because the city doesn't operate transit within the city. But what they can do is have policies to support improving transit service. So one of those items could be facilitating speed and reliability improvements along major corridors of the city. Also improving access to transit stops. So typically that's walking and biking to bus stops. And then also advocate for tiered service. And that's really speaking to looking at, given the different densities across the city, maybe there is on-demand service, shuttle service, that would be more appropriate than fixed route service in more dense areas of the city. So in terms of the 20-year project list, these multimodal level service policies all feed into developing that list. This is a flow chart and there is also a more easier to read version, attachment one in your memo. And I'm going to be talking about the process that we'll be going through over the summer and into the fall with the various land use alternatives that we'll be evaluating. So as I mentioned earlier, we are evaluating how growth allocated across the city may need additional transportation improvement projects or programs to support that growth. This initial process is look, is developing this large bucket of projects for us to consider. So part of that large list of projects that we develop will be based on our multimodal level of service policies. But along with that, there are other things that can be considered for that project list. So if there are projects currently in adopted city plans or programs, such as a Canyon Park subarea plan, those projects would be put into the mix. We're also updating the city's current safety plan. So if there are potential projects to improve safety within the city, that gets included. There's also transportation resiliency task as well. So anything to support our emergency evacuation routes, that gets added as well. And we are also going out to the community to understand their feedback as well. And that relates to a online website and then also a survey and web map to collect the community's feedback on where they may see areas for improvement. It could be mobility barriers, safety or near miss crashes that they have experienced. All that information gets fed into our project development process. Once we have this long list of projects to consider to support future year growth, we do have to prioritize those projects. We have a 20-year planning horizon and we also have limited resources over that 20 years. So we will be going through and developing prioritization criteria this fall. And then we will be evaluating each of these projects against those criteria to see which ones move to the top and would benefit the community the most. Part of that prioritization process would be, again, going out to the community. So this would be our second touch point with them. And this is an opportunity for the public to provide feedback on where they feel certain projects are most important and we are able to ask them why. And that can get fed into our prioritization process. The next step is actually looking at the funding constraints. As I mentioned earlier, over the 20-year period, there's only so many dollars or grant funding that's likely to be available to the city. And so going through that process, we can figure out what seems reasonable to be able to fund over the next 20 years. And that creates our final 20-year transportation element project list, which is at the bottom of that list. And this is where we would also plan to have our third touch point with the community to go back to them and share kind of the final results of this process and to make sure that we can share that their feedback has also been incorporated into this planning process. So with that, I wanted to pull up as a last slide, just the flow chart of the process that we're going through to update the transportation element. As I mentioned, we're kind of in that second tile there where we're evaluating, where we are going through developing the draft transportation priorities and evaluating potential multimodal level of service policies. And again, as we get into the fall with our full project list and our prioritization process, we'll be coming back to Planning Commission and City Council to provide an update of where we are. And we'll be continuing with public engagement throughout the process as well.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Gustafson, then Commissioner Robson.
I have two questions. Sarah Gustafson here, and I'll start with my first. This is really exciting. It's very tangible. And I do wonder, with public engagement, what kinds of activities are planned? Are we going to perhaps have people in a room and have them rank potential projects? Are we going to do surveys and so forth?
That's a great question. So I envision later in the fall, we'd be holding a type of transportation element open house. And so that would be a way for us to not only gather public feedback throughout the online webpage, but also have, hopefully if it all works out, roll plots of the map and the projects we've come up with. And then the opera, the city, the public would have opportunities to vote for what they feel like would be most beneficial. So it could be like a sticker dot exercise. It could be a post-it exercise where people could provide comments. A number of ways to approach it.
Sarah Gustafson here. I suppose, given our funding constraints, there's no chance of taking the open house on the road, so to speak, and bringing it to a apartment complex or a community center like the North Shore Senior Center?
I think we would work with city staff to figure out how we can approach that. And if there isn't an opportunity to have more than one event, we can certainly try and advertise this type of events more broadly. So not just on the project website online, but we could print out flyers and hand them out senior senator, senior centers or apartment complexes, that type of thing.
Commissioner Robson.
Thank you. I actually just want to double down on what Commissioner Gustafson said. And I want to express my concern for strictly leaving things to a you come to us or go online for this kind of stuff. And this isn't just like an issue with the Transportation Department or the Public Works Department. This is a government-wide, international issue that people on the margins who are isolated often don't hear their voices heard. But people like the homeless, people with disabilities, people, non-English speakers and the elderly, these are the people we need to be prioritizing when it comes to transportation. They are not able to, I mean, I mean, obviously, there are some of them who are not able to navigate the internet, who would have no idea where to find that kind of information or how to get on a browser or find the URL if you're talking to my mom. And those are the people we need to absolutely be, not my mom, but we need to be prioritizing when we take stock of what the needs are in our community. I really, I really feel strongly that we go into those communities because people who are non-English speakers, for example, I know that Bothell is not necessarily equipped to execute this plan very smoothly because no, nobody is. But that's, that's something we need to take up as, as a city to really make sure that the people who are on the edges of our community are being heard to find out, you know, their priorities, their complications. Because we can imagine what those might be, but as you guys know, that's not the best way to plan for them. So just, so thank you. I'm going to put that out there on the table again.
So let me talk to that a little bit more. So our public outreach is kind of coming in layers. Like, I don't know how best to describe this, but you can see our projects are kind of in silos. Safety projects, vehicle capacity projects, pedestrian projects, bike projects. So as an example, we went out for our pedestrian program specifically. And we did a couple of things. We did the online thing, but we also did interviews with key stakeholders, one of which we're. But we also did interviews with key stakeholders, one of which were, you know, disabled persons, representatives, not necessarily the actual person, but representatives. So we are trying to reach out for, in those silos as well, to talk about pedestrian. And we did that with bikes as well. And then we will try to do something overall as well, under the umbrella of the whole comp plan. One other exercise that we want to do is not just get input, but also see what comes out. So let's say we come out and we have a map and you can put the projects on the map. You want to look at that to make sure the projects aren't in one area of the city or this area of the city. And they're broadly spread out. And where there are disadvantaged communities, you see projects basically in those areas as well. So there'd be a couple of layers that are going on to try to get that reach as well as the equity.
Other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kurd?
Thanks. Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I'm really encouraged and excited for the feedback. Two things. The first one is about transit, and I'm thinking about different types of policy that the city could encourage. And one of the things that I hear frequently is about safety of public transit. And when I think of safety of public transit, I'm also thinking about waiting at night at a bus stop for a bus to come. And waiting on the side of a road where it's 40 miles an hour is maybe not safe. And so having lighting, having kind of protection for bus stops too, that's a city policy, not necessarily something that Sound Transit has control over. And so there are other ways that the city can be a better partner in terms of transit. And I think that we can think more holistically about that, too. So encourage, well, I know that people are going to have lots to say during the feedback. And so I'm encouraged to dive into transit a little bit more and learn what people would like to hear on that. The other more clarifying question I have is about the 20-year project list. Are these capital projects only on this list? Or are there also sort of like planning or interaction with other agencies and sort of non-capital things on the list?
So depending on the color of funding. So the funding we're going to account for is all the funding that transportation is available to it. There are certain uses of funds that we can't use for certain things. As an example, TDM, Transportation Demand Management, traditionally, they would not, you cannot use transportation impact fees, unfortunately. So those transportation impact fees would likely go more toward capital projects. With the multimodal level of service, they would go not just toward vehicle projects, but they would go toward pedestrian projects and bicycle projects, which are now recognized as capacity. So that's good. We would have to look for other sources for Transportation Demand Management, but this is one of the things I think I'm trying to tell the Planning Commission and the council. Don't just think projects, think programs. So we will have to try to find ways to fund those programs that we want to fund. Because the way we want to look at this is, let's look at our needs, let's look at programs that we can reduce our capital project needs. And the capital projects would be the last things that we have to do to meet our requirements, essentially. We will have to find the ways to fund that. And, you know, at Canyon Park, we did the same thing. We had a TDM program. We couldn't use TIF funds, but we were able to get legislative funds. We were able to get regional mobility grant funds, which are becoming more and more available for these things, which is very good. But the City Council also applied REIT II funds, just in case we didn't get the legislative match funding. So we will have to be creative and we will look at all the different pots of funding.
Cool. I guess a follow-up question to that is the project pipeline. So we have capital improvement projects, we have the TIF, we have, I'm wondering, is there a more long-term guiding project pipeline that is internal to Public Works right now that kind of envisioned already a 20- or 50-year list of projects that you anticipate will show up on this list and maybe haven't been on the, you know, six-year plans and so forth?
So the, so the list that we're using, again, think of the silos. Let's start with the bicycle plan. So the bicycle plan has, what did I tell you, $200 million worth of projects? We're not going to get that done in 20 years. I can tell you that. Okay? So we do have a long list, and after we're done with our prioritization across the silos, some of those projects will be identified in the 20 years. Again, we're going to, we have already prioritized our bike plan, right? But we're also going to prioritize them across as well. So what you'll see is likely, let's say, of the top 15, you might not see number one, you might see number two, number four, number eight, number 16. The reason you would do that is because if you go through all our criteria and you match them up with the other silos, you either get the best bang for your buck or it, that particular project where that particular bike facility is also happens to be where we need pedestrian, where we need vehicle capacity. There's a safety issue as well. It checks all the boxes. So that's kind of how it's going to be put together. So my suspicion is each of those silos, except vehicles, will have far more than 20 years worth of projects. And we're only going to get a certain amount of them. The vehicle projects are probably going to start from where we started before. Those don't go away. Some of them we're already working on. They haven't been built and we will have to keep them in the plan. But the interesting part will be, how much growth has there been? How much effect has telecommuting done? And how much more projects we may need, even after we look at the programs that we can get more people doing alternative means?
Cool. Thank you.
Other Commissioner comments, questions? So I've got a question on pedestrian gaps and how you are reaching out to identify those. I think there are a lot of small things that could make a difference, and I wonder how many of them are picked up. And I'll give you my particular pet peeve. I know frontage improvements happen with development. And I've got a couple of places where I walk where the frontage developments end on one side of the street and start on the other. And a simple crosswalk would go a long way towards connectivity and it's simply not there. How are you going to look out for those sorts of barely minor things, which I could think, or I think could have a big impact?
So that's a great question. That's one we're struggling with in terms of resources and time and what we want to get done. So let me tell you where we are. So Rita Hu is our sidewalk program manager. And she has, for the last, I don't know, seven to 10 years, been the program manager. And they literally have cataloged every gap they can find in this city. In the winter, when we don't have as many projects to oversee, we have some inspectors going out literally to inspect and do gaps. The other thing they do is go look at all our ADA ramps and measure it to make sure they're compliant or not compliant. So as far as gaps go, we think we have a pretty good list. Like bikes, it's probably in 100, $200 million range to do all the gaps. The connectivity part is the hard part because that's where you literally have to spend a lot of time and look at the street and go, I have a sidewalk here. I don't have, I have a sidewalk on this side. Just a crosswalk would help us. So we will see how far we can get on that. One of the things that we are going to have to rely upon, at least right now, is the public telling us things like that. So my hope is that you would go online, put your PIN there and say, hey, a crosswalk would finish this thing.
And how are you reaching out to make that known, the ability to do that?
That would be through coming in. And we have SARA in Community Development that are doing their online portal, and they're developing that mapping system and PIN system that will come up. I think it's going to be probably mid to late July and through August that we're going to have that.
Okay.
I think if you look at pedestrians, we will be solid in the gap analysis. We will be doing our best for connectivity. So I think part of the policies we will have to include in the pedestrian section is continue to work on connectivity, which means in the next few years, we will try to do more surveys. I think one of the visions the council has in their priorities is connectivity of neighborhoods. So that's a similar thing. That's not an easy exercise, especially in Bothell, where another grid system. So to get connectivity between neighborhoods, sometimes you have to look pretty detailed and be pretty creative. And that takes time and effort. So I think those are the kinds of things I'm sharing with the Planning Commission and the council is, we may not be able to get to everything and implement everything and inventory everything, but we should put the policy in there so that over the next few years, those are some of the things we do. And that's what, that's how we task the staff to do those things.
Okay. Thank you. Others?
I guess I want to prompt you a little bit. So multimodal level of service, you've heard the direction that staff's kind of recommending. We want to make sure you guys are okay and we're going in the right direction.
Encouraged.
We're big on multimodal in this group.
Okay. So we have very specific things, like vehicles, we're going to measure it similar to how we've done it. But that's not the only measurement. We're going to measure PED and we're going to measure bike. So we want to make sure we're clear on how we're approaching this. Some of the things like pedestrians, we are doing gap analysis. I'm trying to be very clear, we're going to do as much connectivity as we can, but it's not going to be complete. There are some other things that might not be measured as level of service that we might look at either through guidelines or through design standards. Like if you're on a certain type of arterial with a certain volume, then you need to have this much, this type of crossing every so however long. Those are better suited probably for guidelines and standards versus level of service. Again, we're trying to be reasonable and practical. We're a 20-year cycle. We want to make sure we, we can't have everything. We do have to prioritize things.
Well, in previous meetings, the commission has expressed a strong interest in transit connectivity and, you know, really focusing, for instance, in our discussions on parking, relaxing parking requirements near transit so that we are encouraging that transit use and measuring transit service as a significant issue as well. So yes, we're there. Commissioner Westerbeck, did I see you?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I kind of jumped in, I rapped to you and you didn't even see, so I appreciate you did see me. As part of the prioritizing, looking at the most inexpensive, kind of low-hanging fruit things, kind of make a crosswalk cost money to put in, I know, but maybe it's one of the less expensive things. Or the leading interval, I know that some council members asked about that, which would have saved me tonight. I actually almost got hit by a car crossing Bothell Way, happens every couple of weeks. The guy literally stopped just five feet from me and didn't see me. But it seems like there's, you know, small, faster, cheaper things. Is that part of the priority set of guidelines at all? That we kind of say, hey, we could do these and we should be looking at opportunities to do these. It's not a sidewalk. It's not a capital project.
I would say those are a form of programs, and I think those can be discrete. In other words, the policy you just said would be make downtown more pedestrian friendly, especially crossings and things. So that kind of is the policy. And then how do you achieve that policy? You probably don't want to identify project by project. Oh, 183rd Crossing in 5, you know, Bothell Way, oh, 185th Crossing. They're not large enough, but you could identify a program that addresses those. We have safety programs and things like that.
Yeah. I guess that's what I'm getting at, yeah, exactly. We're always looking for these and we, you know, there's a pot of money that's designated to those, you know, these are the less expensive things we're always going to look out for with this program.
Yeah. And I think those would be annual programs, some of which you already have. And I think I told the council the other night, the same questions came up. Those are things this fall we're going to be starting to look at. We just had adaptive signal put in and there's a break-in period that
Sure.
they have to have certain requirements.
Yeah.
But that's kind of over. Once we get through the summer hump of some of our construction and maintenance stuff, this fall, we will have staff time and it's one of the things we're looking for.
Yeah.
And one of the things I told them was, those are probably not comprehensive things, comprehensive plan things, other than the policy level, how you get them done. Those are more tools in our tool belt.
Right. It flows from like visions of our ideas and safety and equity and things like that.
So we look at every intersection. We try to make sure we understand what's going on. There may be some tools that work better than others for that particular intersection. Not every single tool applied to that particular one. But that's a process and a program that we can go through.
Okay. Because I can very much appreciate, we always want all these kinds of things that cost a lot of money. And it's like, well, what can we do that is, will cost some, because I know staff costs money and every little drop of paint costs money, all these things, or whether it's working with WashDOT to talk about, you know, staff time on lights, whatever, there's always a money component. But I know there's got to be some that are, those programs that cost less and just hope we have those on our radar. Because it does seem like you can get a big bang for your buck out of some of those at least.
Yes.
And I know you've thought about those in the past and this is ground you've troved before, so appreciate it.
No, that's good input.
Well, even just to walkability downtown, all of those signals, my experience is default to don't walk. And if you walk up Bothell Way, if you get there and it's green, it's going to say, don't walk, and you have to hit it and wait a whole cycle. And you get people walking through. So even going to default walk would, I think, have a safety issue.
Commissioner Westerbeck, didn't Commissioner Alder, or Councilmember Alder, bring that up the other night? She was asking for the default to be walk until it's actually needs to be not walk. Appreciate that.
And yes, programming does cost money, too.
Yeah, yeah, it does. But it's an ongoing program. So I think, again, we address it as a policy on what we want to see, and then we figure out how we're going to accomplish that. And like you just said, there's several ways of doing it. I don't think we're going to look at every single intersection as a project, but we will look at a program for walkability. And then our job is kind of figure out where that priority is and where we want to start. Because you have a whole city to take care of. Yeah.
Seeing none. Did you get some feedback from us useful?
I think so, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. We do appreciate you coming here and speaking with us, so.
Thank you.
Very interesting. And I think that concludes our study session. So next item on the agenda is reports from staff. Anything for us?
One item to report on. So as you all might know, there is a public hearing for the middle housing comprehensive plan and code amendments at City Council on July 11, 2023. I don't know why I told you the year. It's this year. It's next week. We did want to let you all know that there have been changes made to the Planning Commission recommendation, because I think, as you all know, HB 1110 was passed after the recommendation was made. And so there were some things that didn't align in that code. We've been working with our legal counsel, Department of Commerce, and talking internally about what we could put together that would at least create the framework for middle housing in alliance, compliance with HB 1110. So that packet will be published this Friday. We encourage you all to take a look at it. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me and we can try to clarify maybe the what or why of why some of those things were changed. But we think we've hopefully found a happy medium and, you know, timing has been really fun on this, so.
All right. Thank you. Reports from members. Looking around the table. Mr. Westerbeck?
This is not a report, but it ties into the conversation we had a minute ago about transportation. Of course, I mentioned that I had a scare tonight with crossing the road, but it also ties into, I met someone for a piece of business this afternoon, who, he lives in Canyon Park. And he was talking about whether we go to Bothell Landing very often or whatever. And he said, he essentially said he was scared, he thought it was scary to cross 527 or 522. It's like, oh, that doesn't deter you? No. But I'm thinking like people with babies and families and bikes and something, I cross every day, either 522 or 527. It just struck me that this, I'll just say, is a middle-aged man like me. It just struck me that this, I'll just say, he's a middle-aged man like me, you know, six foot two or something, and he's scared of 522 for obvious reasons. So I just thought that was kind of impactful. And we're, you know, we hear a lot of stories about 522 and 527, and it's dangerous, and I've been almost hit there a number of times as well because I cross it all the time. So anyway, the work we're doing matters. It'll matter to a person like that as well. And so all this, all these little tweaks just makes me think about, it's good we're doing this, the council, and all the work we do here, it matters because that just really struck me. He was like, I don't want to cross that. And we've got crosswalks and lights and everything, but it just, it just struck him as dangerous.
Well, and I've mentioned before, I think it is dangerous, particularly with the ride on red because people do not stop and yield before they make a ride on red. They just blow it right through. And if there's a large vehicle there blocking their view.
Yep. That was what happened tonight.
Yeah.
He was just not even paying attention, and he stopped just barely in time. And I think that's probably the, probably, let's face it, the biggest culprit when people are worried about crossing those is the ride on red.
Yeah.
Which we're starting to, start to look at, council has to start looking at.
Other Commissioner comments for us this evening? Seeing none. I don't believe we have anything to report to council at this point. Anyone sees anything? So with that, I think we've got an early one tonight. There being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I move to adjourn. Thank you.
Or a second?
This is Commissioner Kerd. I second the motion.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The July 5 Planning Commission meeting is adjourned at 7:59. Our next meeting will be July 19, last one before the summer break.